Good afternoon, I am Kim Melnick, School Board Chair, and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:32 on this 24th day of September 2024. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please announce the role.
Okay, Madam Chair, present in the School Board Chamber is Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, and Ms. Riggs.
Okay, and for the record, Ms. Weems and Ms. Manning will not be joining us for workshop today. Alright, so, um, School Board Administrative Matters and Reports, anybody have anything? Dr. Robertson, you, I, I'm sorry that, I should have called you about this earlier. You, um, sent out a division-wide memo to parents about school threats, and, um, this is not, you know, exclusive to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, but the amount of time that is spent, um, doing all of that work is, it's immense. And so, um, we don't have to talk about it this evening, but perhaps, um, administration might be able to give us, at lea-, you know, the board and the public maybe a breakdown of what it, what it takes, um, when there is a threat, and what, what recourse do we have as a division, um, for dis-, the discipline portion, the discipline side of, of these threats, whether credible or not credible, because both halt, halt our work.
Can I say one thing? Um, and I was reading in our V S B A daily, um, newsletters, that now, uh, the Attorney General Jason Ayers is stepping up, um, on these and starting to look into prosecuting parents on this and making people more accountable, so that's, that's a good news thing too. Because we definitely need help from the state, I think.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything, administrative matters? Yes ma'am?
Um, you have the three sign-up sheets?
I haven't finished, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, okay, so now, we have three papers. We have the October 2024 Meeting with Superintendent Sheet, we have the School Visits with the Superintendents for Friday, October 4th, and we have a sign-up sheet for the V S B A Annual Convention, um, which this year is November 20th through 22nd. This is a sheet that, um, the Clerk created, and, um, easy for her to read and understand, and, and then be able to make the, the necessary arrangements for the board. So, I will pass to my right, and we'll get that back over to you, Mr. Culpepper. Alright, so seeing nothing else, then we will begin this afternoon with the School Division Services School Opening Update, and we welcome Mr. Jack Freeman, Chief Operations Officer. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. This is, uh, about two years ago, we first did this brief, uh, as a school opening update to give you an opportunity to learn the work that we do over the course of the summer, but it's also a good opportunity to learn a little bit more about what Division Services does to support our, uh, schools, uh, staff and students. Um, so we're gonna go through each one of the offices, uh, that we have, so, uh, you'll hear from Melissa Ingram from Facilities, you'll hear from Eric Woodhouse from Maintenance, or from Sam Nix from Custodial and Distribution Services, J T Lash from Transportation, Rachel Lamato from Food Services, and Tommy DiMartini from Security and Emergency Management. Uh, and new for this year, we have Frank Fentress here with us today. So Frank Fentress, as you may know, uh, he is an employee of the city, but he basically functions as a director in Division Services, and they provide the landscape services. So this year, we're gonna give you an opportunity to learn a little bit more about, uh, what the Landscape Services Team does for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So with that, we've got a little bit of a, actually, we're all set. So I'm gonna, uh, bring Melissa Ingram up to talk to you, and we'll start with Facilities.
Thank you, good afternoon, a little bit of rain out there, but, uh, just wanna thank the School Board for their time today. Um, at the Office of Facility Services, uh, we're also comprised, as you know, by the Office of Maintenance Services and Office of Custodial and Distribution Services, and we work hard during the summer weeks while the Division serves over 5,000 students in our school buildings. In order to conduct repairs, preventative maintenance, large-scale capital improvement projects, adhere to overall school cleaning protocols, and support distribution and special event needs. This work impacts all the divisions over 90 school facilities and 11 million square feet of space. Our offices aim to have all school sites ready for the first day of the school year while working to support the needs of the learning environments in summer learning sites and for staff and students' preparations weeks before those first days of the school year as well. Um, in regard to the Capital Improvement Program, or C I P, our staff and contractors were hard at work in over 30 sites this summer on large-scale maintenance projects. These often require years of scoping, design, and planning, and may need to be conducted in several phases, particularly roof replacements, HVAC replacements, fire alarm replacements, foundation repairs, and some of our larger-scale curriculum enhancements such as the welding lab replacement at the Tech Ed Center, which some of you might have, uh, visited at the open house for this space earlier this month. Not only was a $2 million grant funding partnership with the Navy, Blue Forge, and D-Tall celebrated at this open house, but so were the students and future workforce opportunities that these infrastructure improvements will support. We continue to appreciate and work with these partners in planning for an additional lab retrofit and grant opportunities. Our staff and contractors have, have worked hard throughout all hours of the summer weeks to reach substantial completion on all of these projects, and will continue work through commissioning periods and warranty periods, as you may see at times when you visit our school buildings, in order to ensure that our systems have been installed and operating properly to design specifications. All these large-scale projects consider system-based components and often impact other systems within the school buildings. Of all the over 30 sites, only two sites have had an impact on an area of schools at school opening, and those are the gym floors at Kempsville High School and at First Colonial High School, which had the humidity level of their sa-, system negatively impacted as a result of several heavy, unforecasted rain events. While not uncommon occurrences for our staff and contractors to manage through at all of our sites, the decision had to be made at these two sites to sand down the gym floors and refinish them to a larger extent than maintenance of these floors initially planned for the summer. With staff expediting these repairs, Kempsville High School will be able to fully use their gym floor this weekend on September 28th, and First Colonial High School will be able to fully use their gym on Thursday, October 3rd. In the interest to have these schools use their floors as early as possible, while respecting the curing process needed for durable playing surfaces, we've been able to work with staff of the schools to have foot-only P E traffic and practices at Kempsville High School starting yesterday, and at First Colonial High School the day after tomorrow, uh, 9/26. We appreciate working with all of our partners at the School Division to make these projects successful and to support their needs, such as by adding HVAC in kitchens to support our kitchen staff. Rachel Lamato of Food Services will be discussing the benefits of scratch cooking later in the brief, as we are glad to report that we were able to incorporate scratch cooking at six school sites this summer and H R A, and able to install HVAC in kitchens at two of these school sites where there previously was none, Kings Grant Elementary and Rosemont Elementary School, bringing the number of kitchens without HVAC down to 20 from 22. In preparation for the upcoming budget cycle, I look forward to speaking with you further about these type of large-scale projects in November at our Facilities Update, and we will also be giving you an update on our sustainability initiatives in December. And now I just wanna turn it over to Mr. Eric Woodhouse, uh, Director of Maintenance Services.
Oh, it's already up. Um, good afternoon, members of the board, Dr. Robertson. Um, wanna thank you for the opportunity to share some of the great work done by our team. This summer alone, we undertook over 80 repair projects, addressing critical issues across H V A C, electrical, plumbing, and roofing systems. We also replaced casework in classrooms and painted hallways, gyms, and cafeterias at various schools. Additionally, we performed preventive maintenance on key systems such as electrical switch gears, wheelchair lifts, elevators, rolling fire doors, windows, and intercom systems to ensure their longevity. This is just a snapshot of the extensive maintenance, preventive maintenance work we undertake each year. Also want to express our gratitude for the board's support in approving the upcoming maintenance project funded by the Capital Improvement Program. Our office is the first line of defense when systems fail, and we address these issues promptly to minimize disruption. Managing over 90 facilities, our team works tirelessly, often under challenging conditions, to keep schools and administrative buildings operational. Yeah, I gotta figure this one out, oh, good. In our broader efforts to suppo-, support schools, we have collaborated with the Department of Teaching and Learning on various building modifications, including I M A C computer labs, new interactive systems, study labs, and outdoor learning sys-, outdoor learning spaces to enhance the learning environment. We have also worked with the schools and the Department of Leadership on office and classroom conversions. On this current slide, you will see the O D S classroom conversion. The before picture shows the teacher's desk and counter, with the after picture displaying the finished product, complete with fresh paint and additional coat hooks for student backpacks. The projected cost for the conversion would have been over $50,000 if services were contracted out. The work most likely would not have been completed before the start of school. With the expertise of the O M S staff, the overall cost was a little over $9,000 and completed two weeks before the start of school. I do want to note that Dr. Hamlin and Mr. Goldenshue were a pleasure to work with, and it was a team effort to complete this project within the given timeframe. Our Office of Maintenance Services impact every office in the Division, whether through direct support or assistance with programs or projects. The, over this past year, we have managed over 65,000 work orders. We understand the pressure on administrators when facility issues impact student success. Rest assured, our dedicated O M S team works diligently to ensure the learning environment supports student achievement. If you encounter maintenance concern, please notify us through the appropriate channels immediately. We are committed to resolving issues as effectively and efficiently as possible. Now, onto something that brings us great joy. As shown on the next slide, O M S stays connected with students at all levels. We participate in career days, invite students to our facility for field trips, and engage in programs like our Summer Student Program in partnership with the Tech Center. Jordan Peterson Crawford, featured in the larger picture, was a student at the Technical and Career Education Center and participated in our program for two consecutive summers. Although she can no longer join us due to her graduation, we are exploring opportunities for her with our contracted partners to continue her tra-, trade work during summer breaks. Recently, a member of my leadership team said, "Mr. Woodhouse, we are more than just summer projects." This couldn't be more accurate. There's a lot that happens behind the scenes, from coordinated with the Fire Department to ensure compliance with applicable codes and regulations, to working with Dominion Energy to restore power during outages, and responding to emergency calls at all hours. We are available 24/7, always ready to respond at a moment's notice. So I wanna thank you for your continued support and trust in our team. I will now turn it over to Mr. Nix, Director of Custodial and Distribution Services. Thank you.
Oops. Make sure I got this right. Good afternoon, Chair Person Mel, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the School Board, Dr. Robertson. My name is Sam Nix, I'm the Director of Custodial and Distribution Services. I would like to thank you for allowing me to share some of the accomplishments this summer, our, our team completing in preparation for the return of the students and staff for the 24/25 school year. Sorry I have my glasses hanging a little bit. I have not succumbed to what my wife told me to get bifoced, but I'm, um, (laugh). The Office of Custodial and Distribution Services provide a well-maintained learning environment and support students by delivering instructional material and equipment. These are some of the Custodial and Distribution Service Team members that provide that ongoing This summer, our office completed over 130 projects, including screening and recording of over 20 gym floors. We stripped and waxed off floors throughout the Division, and we performed overall cleaning protocols for school readiness. This summer, we added a new project, as we heard from our high school administrators, and that was pressure washing all 11 high school bleachers in preparation for the football season. Here are just some of the projects, um, our, our office completed this summer. Our great custodians take pride in being a vital part of the V B C P S family. That is why we call our custodians the concierge of our buildings, because they engage in many responsibilities outside of that of cleaning. For instance, preparing for special, professional, excuse me, special events, providing support for parks and recreation programs, bus support, taking care of some of our courtyard areas, support for voting and polling, relocating classroom furniture, delivering of textbook materials within the buildings, and most important adhered to us, our opportunities for student engagement in the cafeteria. And these are just some of the pictures of our folks providing, excuse me, doing those In efforts towards filling staffing vacancies and improving retention, we participated in Division related career and recruitment events. This summer, we also had the opportunity at Senior Staff Retreat, um, where we were able to meet with the docile team to brainstorm ways to improve hiring and retaining custodians. We also are happy that, to have the return or continuation of the Substitute Initiative Program, which has helped with those efforts of those vacancies. This year, we have over 219 employees that are participating. This year, we're happy to say we started with, the year off with 33 vacancies, and with that said, our office continues to work with the Departments of Human Resources and Budget and Finance to improve our ability to recruit, hire, and retain custodians. We received over 5,500 work order requests in our Distribution Center this summer in preparation for the start of the school year. Some of those work orders included delivering of student records, kindergarten materials, furniture, custodial supplies, printing materials and forms, teaching and learning materials, and our D L T supplies to schools. They also included removal of kitchen equipment, surplus computers, surplus furniture, and we also provided special event support for various departments and offices throughout the Division. In this slide, as you can see here, are some of the, some additional photos of some of the great work our custodial teams completed this summer. As you can see, we take great pride in what we do to ensure that all of our students, staff, community leaders, and community can have a great place to come into in a welcoming environment. And with that said, I'd like to thank you again very much for allowing me to share some of our things that we completed over this, this past summer to prepare for our students' return. I'd like to turn it over to the Executive Director of Transportation and Fleet Management Services, Mr. J T Lash.
This afternoon, I'll provide you with an update on our Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services, which I'll relate to as being the driving force of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. To say our department has been busy over the summer is an understatement. Our staff has been busy with supporting summer programs, training staff, planning, routing, and maintaining our V B C P S fleet. I'll begin with Fleet Management Services area. Over the summer, our fleet employees were able to accomplish the following. They completed almost 1,700 work orders between the period of June 19th and August 23rd. Completed an average of 36 work orders each day during a 45-day period. They completed a multitude of services. Shop staff was actually utilized a few days at the end of the school year and a few days before the start of summer, uh, school programs, as well as this school year, out helping drivers start buses, make mirror adjustments, et cetera. They complet-, I'm happy to report they completed the required preventive maintenance inspections on our fleet of school buses this summer, all while approximately 311 buses were utilized Monday through Thursday for summer school and other programs. As you can see, our team has been very busy. Next, I'll cover driver recruitment and training, and I have some good news for y'all. Driver recruitment, training, and hiring is an ongoing task for our Transportation and Human Resources staff, um, and they do an excellent job keeping this process going. A variety of ways are utilized to help recruit, including the recent Care Fair in which Transportation and Human Resources recruited at. As you know, V B C P S has set high standards for our employees, especially those we entrust to safely transport students. People leave employment for various reasons, including retirement, resignations, relocations, et cetera. Also, we have a number of individuals out from time to time, whose routes need to be covered intermittently or long-term. This creates vacancies in the driving and bus assistant ranks, so we have an ongoing process to recruit, train, and hire bus staff. Not only do we utilize traditional yellow school buses, we also do utilize white fleet vans to transport students when it is more efficient. We anticipate the new bus assistant rate to help us fill open positions. You'll see a snapshot of our combined efforts on the slide. 21 drivers were trained between July 1st and September 24th. Five currently in driver training class and have, um, temporary employment agreements. And as you recall, um, some of you will recall, a few years ago, uh, we offered that in paid training, and that's really helped us, um, so they receive health benefits from the time they start training on. Next, you'll notice on the screen, uh, we have a few applicants that are scheduled to attend our next class, which begins October 2nd. I'm proud to say, as of 1:30 this afternoon, we now have 23 people that are signed up for that class, so that's, that's a great achievement. We currently need 40 bus assistants, um, but we're working on that as well. However, 15 drivers and 16 assistants have been recommended for hire and currently waiting background clearances. We know we'll continue to add and lose drivers throughout the school year, and our training department stands ready and scheduled, uh, ready with scheduled monthly classes. I wanna stress, though, the current lack of drivers is a manageable problem, and we are on track to fill open seats in the near term. Also, prior to the opening of the school year, our department held its annual transportation and service meetings. These were face-to-face, department-wide meetings. The first was held Wednesday, August 21st, and it was great to have our whole transportation family back together again for our school kickoff meeting. Important topics covered at this meeting included employee relations, risk management, student behavior management, seizure training. In addition, an additional in-service, or additional in-service meetings were held the following day by each of our area supervisors, and topics of those meetings included additional information on students with healthcare needs, which was provided by our V P C, but, V B C P S Health Services Professionals, and a ru-, review of Transportation Handbook, as well as other policies and regulations. Several years ago, we implemented a system of having parents register their children for bus transportation services. This program helps staff create bus routes, allowing us to utilize staff and buses more efficiently, while always keeping safety of our, as our number-one priority. Our staff work hard to assign students to buses right up to the school opening, and they continue to assign students. Some transportation statistics for this school year include, the total number of students registered for transportation this year was a little over 51,000 students. As you'll see, 49,034 regular education students and 2,630 students with disabilities. Total number of buses on the road this year is 525. The total number of bus runs is 3,760, which is 2,295 regular education, 895 students with disabilities, 250 academy runs, as well as 320 other runs, which could be half-day programs, activity, and speech programs, et cetera. Even though the school, um, has been open for a few weeks, we continue to receive transportation requests for current students and those who have just relocated to Virginia Beach. Students are typically assigned to routes within three to five business days, once information is inputted by schools into the Synergy Student Information System. This concludes our briefing for the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services. Now I'd like to introduce- Now I'd like to introduce Rachel Amato, Interim Director of Food Services. Thank you.
Thank you, J T. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Chef Rachel Amato. I'm the interim director and assistant director of food services, and I'm here to provide you with an update on food service operations. This school year, we're operating the Traditional National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program. These programs are federally subsidized by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and are subject to strict nutritional and fiscal rules and regulations. Under these two programs, meal costs are based on individual eligibility, which is paid, reduced and free. The cost to students that are paid is a dollar fifty for breakfast and a two twelve dollars and twenty-five cents for lunch. Governor, Governor Yonkin and the General Assembly have allocated additional resources to this year's budget to reduce, to fund reduced price portion of the student meals, which is thirty cents for breakfast and forty cents for lunch. What that means is a household provide, approved for reduced meal prices will not have to pay this year. They will receive meals at no cost. Our school meals are healthy, nutritious and tasty. Research shows that students who participate in school meals programs consume more whole grains, milk, fruits and vegetables during the day, especially during their meal times, and have better diets overall than students who do not participate in our programs. Studies also show that eating breakfast at school is associated with better attendance rates for your missed school days and better test scores. We believe that children learn better when they aren't hungry. Our division has applied and received state approval to operate thirty-nine schools under community eligibility provision programs, where all students regardless of household income can receive no-cost meals. Our district has over twenty-two thousand five hundred students that are benefiting from C E P program. On this slide, you can see the thirty-nine schools listed by grade level. Twenty-eight at the elementary level, six at the middle level, and five at the high school level. Our schools qualify for C E P through data received through the Virginia Department of Social Services. In order to qualify for C E P consideration, a school must have forty percent or more directly certified students. What that means is a directly certified student includes those households that receive Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program funding, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families funding, as well as those students that are homeless migrant youth, runaway or foster children. In addition to C E P, we showed that over fifteen thousand five hundred students in, are in non-C E P schools and are currently qualified as free and reduced. Between those two programs, we have over fifty-eight percent of our student population that are able to receive no-cost meal at our schools. Household needing an award letter for other benefits should still apply for free and reduced meal program because these benefits include other benefits than just meals. They can also include low-cost internet, dental and daycare assistance, different types of testing fee waivers like A P and I B, as well as college application fee waivers. During the last school year, our division served over nine point two million student meals. The nine point two million meals are an increase from the yearly average of meals served in the past. This school year so far, we're doing better than pre-pandemic and last year's numbers. If you look at the chart, you can see data from the first five school days of meals served going back to pre-pandemic operations as well as this current school year. You can see here, we have indeed shown an increase in our participation of seven point nine four percent over pre-COVID numbers. A one point six four percent increase over our record-breaking ten million federally funded universal free meals in twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. An increase of fourteen point seven six percent over twenty-two, twenty-three year, and an increase of six point six nine percent over compared to the last school year. To entice students to eat in our cafeterias, we are continuing to expand our Scratch Cooking Initiative menu offerings at all Virginia Beach schools. We also continue to upgrade our kitchen equipment to include modernization of scratch cooking such as combi ovens and tilt skillets to increase efficiency. In collaboration with Melissa at Facility Services and her team, we now have forty-eight school kitchens that have been modernized. We are expanding our Farm to School Initiative to include forty-two active school gardens. Our goal is not only to provide fresh fruits and vegetables to our students, but us also educate our students on nutrition, well-being, sustainability and culinary arts. We have thirteen school sites with junior chef culinary clubs and are excite, excited to expand throughout the year. Last year, we harvested over two hundred and sixty pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables with these initiatives. We also like to give the students an understanding of the program in a sustainable way by first growing the food in the student garden, which then goes to the school kitchen and then to the student culinary club to educate and learn culinary skills. Thank you again, and I will hand it over to Tommy Di Marchini in the Office of Security and Emergency Management.
No, it's not time for dinner yet. Alright, good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to allow me to share with you what the Office of Security and Emergency Management does to prepare for a safe and secure school year. So, shown on the slide is an overview of our coordinators and how they are aligned and their basic roles and responsibilities. As you can see, we have three coordinators with each being assigned a third of the schools. They're assigned geographically in order to um, uh, have better service and efficient access. And each one of them is also assigned an auxiliary building or, or two. We do many things and have highlighted some of the critical things that they tend to. They conduct weekly checks on our armed security officers, an extremely important piece of the supervision of that program. They train and assist in maintaining a high level of professionalism from, from our security teams, holding them accountable to the division's expectations. They train and assist in maintaining a high level of professionalism for our security teams, I'm sorry. They conduct many tabletop exercises, providing admini- administrative teams opportunities to work through different types of emergency scenarios. They are liaisons to the schools on all public safety concerns to include bus stop issues, traffic consultation and property assessments. They monitor securely twenty-four-seven, oftentimes preventing students from committing self-harm or diverting an incident from occurring in our schools while assuring that the proper professionals are referred to the administrative teams or parents and guardians. They, along with Gil Warner, our project manager, are the trainers and facilit- facilitators of our technology services such as Rave, Raptor and Genetek. And they serve as appointed direct contact to our S R Os, supporting our tremendous relationship with our law enforcement partners. They oversee security details at special events such as football games and graduations. And finally, they assist our administrators in conducting investigation when it comes to high-level crime, criminal offenses and school violations. This past year, OSUM was able to do a deeper dive into our division and our citywide emergency preparedness. Our emergency manager, along with our coordinators, were able to upgrade our division's emergency response plans as it relates to individual schools' crisis preparedness. We also work closely with the school's activities coordinators to develop a robust high school stadium crisis management plan. And those documents have been uploaded and accessible in the intranet site. Working with our technology department, we are prepared to operate Division Command Center at a moment's notice, keeping us prepared and, and able to manage a crisis if necessary at a high level. Most of you are aware that we exercised a division-wide reunification event last year, and we followed that up this year with a review to make sure we were aligned with our new employees in critical positions. And we have made sure that the technology needed to run a major reunification has been upgraded. Our emergency manager is also integrated with the city's Department of Emergency Management. He meets with them on a regular basis with their leadership team. And in the event we need to evacuate a multi-story building, he recently partnered with Health Services to implement a program, training staff on the use of evacuation chairs for our students with disabilities. Working with Maintenance Services and using grant funding, we were able to purchase and install stop-the-bleed kits in every school. And lastly, he recently briefed senior staff on our process to prepare, plan, report and execute strategies when it comes to a pending inclement weather event. In a team effort, including our H R department, budget and the V B P D, we are proud of the progress to place an armed security officer in each of our secondary schools. We currently only have two schools left to fill. We anticipate this program reaching its full staffing in the near future. In keeping with our process and with the suppo- with the support of the Virginia Beach Police Department's firearm training unit, we train these individuals in accordance with our standards and the guidelines provided by the State Code of Virginia. And once again, the V B P D invited our S S O twos to their yearly summer training for school resource officers. Continuing along with our emphasis on training, as previously discussed to this board, this year, all security assistants attended training conducted by the OSUM team in August. And various top topics were covered to include job expectations, mandatory D C J S certifications, our in-house training on Run, Hide, Protect, and crisis prevention, technology integration, including Raptor and Rave. And finally, we also conducted our annual training for administrators, teaching on topics such as investigations, proper searching techniques, security assistance expectations, and our technology upgrades. As we continue to always upgrade and assess our division's technology, we increased access controls by four, cameras by twenty-four, and we fully converted all schools from analog two-way radios to digital two-way radios. And aligning us with the city's initiative to roll out the Rave application, this year, we have expanded our user groups to, to the platform. Last year, only principals and senior leadership were Rave users. This year, we've included security staff, school activity coordinators and nurses. And we will be conducting a division-wide test on, on our staff day, October seventh. All employees will receive a test message on that date from their leadership team in their corresponding geofenced assigned areas. And we recently purchased handheld metal detectors for all the schools. This will allow administrators and appropriate staff to conduct searches for weapons when necessary in a less intrusive manner. And of course, we couldn't do all this without any money. I'm proud of the efforts of our project manager and his relentless pursuit to acquire hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant funding. We were able to get a leftover supplement this year from the twenty-twenty-twenty-one school equipment grant. The twenty-twenty-two cops grant still funds our Rave project and newly installed message boards. These boards have been installed at all schools and will soon be able to alert students and visitors of emergency situations. And last year, we also obtained the school safety and security grant as well. That's given us a total grant total of five hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. And we are still waiting on the approval of two additional grants we recently applied for. Lastly, I'd like to remind you of the work the School Safety Task Force did this past year. The Physical Security Subcommittee led by myself and Lieutenant Loki presented several topics to the committee for both decision and information. We provided a thorough overview of the pros and cons of implementing walk-through metal detectors in all of our schools for arrival and throughout the day. The committee was briefed on how to implement the program in the most effective manner, and after hearing the logistical, physical and practical challenges of what it would take to fully implement the system division-wide, the decision was made to not integrate walk-through metal detectors in our division at this time. We provided an after-action review for the committee of the Department of Justice Uvalde Report, focusing on several key components of the report as they related to our division. We were able to identify how we and the Virginia Beach City Public Schools are prepared to prevent a similar situation. The committee was also provided a presentation on implementing a clear-bag policy for all students. After a breakdown of the advantages and disadvantages were discussed at length, it was determined to not implement a division-wide clear-bag policy at that time. And a review of our federation system, the committee decided to upgrade federation's capabilities. And as we discussed previously with this board, it will enhance the ability of our law enforcement partners to better serve us. Our emergency manager also briefed the committee on the school systems preparedness to manage inclement weather in a systematic and pre-planned organized manner. Now, I'd like to also, um, I think most of you know that turning over, being last in this presentation, I have mixed emotions about. But it is important, it is important to recognize our, our team of Parks and Rec and Mr. Frank Fentress. We're glad to have him here today. He's fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Tommy. Uh, I'm Frank Fentress. I work for Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation. And I think you all are already well-aware of the multifaceted collaborative relationship between Virginia Beach Parks and Rec and Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We talk about it when we go to um conferences because it's just not something that you see across the country. Um, I'm here to talk about one facet of that today. When I wear one hat, I am the Park and Landscape Services Administrator for the City of Virginia Beach. Meaning we, my staff or our contractors maintain all of the city landscapes, including the Oceanfront Resort, every park, all the roadways, everywhere you see work being done on city property. When I put on my other hat, I am one of Jack's directors, and I'm the director of Park and Land, or Landscape Services for Virginia Beach Public Schools. And we have a small crew that, about fifty people now, that provides some of the services that you see on this first slide. And um, we're on a new sixteen to eighteen day maintenance cycle. That's new for this fiscal year. Resource limitations caused us to have a little bit more extended cycle. The last time we saw this was around two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen during the Great Recession. Our team worked really hard though, before the school year started, to try to get all those cycles lined up. They work overtime for several weekends to try to have all the schools looking pretty good on the first day. But now those cycles have started to slide back out to the sixteen to eighteen. So one was mowed on Friday, and another one was mowed eighteen days ago Friday. So, um, it is becoming apparent now that there's a little bit longer maintenance cycle in the schools. Our teams, we have nine zones in the city with about ten sites in each zone. There's ninety school sites. Um, and those are four to five-person teams. The five-person teams mainly have two high schools in their zones because the high schools with all their sports require a much higher intensity of activity, especially during the spring and the fall. It's important to note that the work orders done by these routine maintenance teams is only about twelve hundred out of the seven thousand total work orders that we do during any given school year. Um, and it includes routine mowing and litter and weed control, just the standard things you would think of if someone was coming to do landscape work at your home. But they're also busy in the winter. We have a hundred playgrounds. These are the folks that put the engineered wood fiber in those hundred playgrounds every year and keep it replenished. Um, they paint manhole covers and poles yellow so that they don't get run over by equipment or get run into by students. They also line and prepare all the fields for the athletics at the high schools and the middle schools. Um, so they're, they're pretty busy year round. The other services that we provide that are a little less known though, include site infrastructure maintenance of everything that's outside the school building. So parking lots, we stripe the parking lots, we replace the signage, we paint the yellow curbs for the bus, uh, or for the fire lanes. Um, our teams on a cycle usually paint about five to ten schools every summer to keep the parking lot stripes visible because some of these parking lots, they get faded over time. Um, they also do asphalt repair and potholes. To get ready for this school year, we did significant asphalt repairs at um Tech Ed and North Landing Elementary, Malibu Elementary School, Princess Anne High School. Um, at Tech Ed, we put eighty tons of asphalt to fix potholes and, and bad spots in the parking lot. First line of defense for potholes is those routine maintenance teams that can put cold patches in a small pothole and hopefully take care of the problem. We also repair miles and miles literally at schools of fences, gates and backstops. There's fences everywhere. Um, Tommy mentioned that they got grant funding. We helped them with our contractors to, and oversaw the contracts to install fences, many of the elementary schools, to improve security at the elementary schools. More and more recently, we've been taking care of stormwater and um drainage repairs at schools. They're being inspected now by Public Works on an annual basis, and they send us um lists of items that need to be corrected with stormwater maintenance. I saw a picture that was sent to me by my team um just last week or the week before where there was a storm pipe that had a hole in it and was sucking, making a sinkhole in the schoolyard. They had to dig it up by hand because there was a power line running directly in line with the pipe, and they dug four feet down to this pipe by hand so they could make the repair. But that's just typical of what they have to do at some of these sites. And then I mentioned we have a hundred playgrounds. Um, we also have certified playground safety inspectors that inspect those playgrounds quarterly, um, which is a requirement with as much use as they get. And then they make the repairs on those playgrounds as necessary to make sure they're safe. Um, for, not only for the, the students' use, but for use on weekends and in evenings by, um, the neighborhoods. We also provide athletic support. I mentioned that there's twenty-one hundred athletic events each year that we prepare for. But there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. We still have our natural turf fields out there. Those natural turf fields are being mowed twice a week during the season. We have intense fertilization programs and weed control programs. The artificial turf fields, they're playable a lot more than the natural turf fields, but they still require maintenance. It's just a different kind of maintenance. Those have to be groomed weekly, and we have to make repairs to those as they're, sometimes they get torn from the activity that's happening on the field. We also have irrigated fields at every high school. Every field is irrigated. Not only the stadium fields, but all the other fields on the high schools are irrigated. We take care of the wells and the irrigation systems at all those, start them up in the spring and shut them down in the winter and make sure they're in good repair. The same people that stripe the parking lot stripe the tracks. And the same people that repair what we call poured-in-place surfacing on playgrounds, repair those rubberized tracks at some of the high schools. So we're able to provide those services in-house as well. And then in the springtime especially, we do a lot of moving of bleachers and, and items around on the schoolyards to get ready for field days and whatever events might be coming up. Another thing that we're not well-known for, but we do pretty intensely, is teaching curriculum support. So you heard mention of the learning gardens at the schools, the scratch cooking gardens, and we help build those. We order the materials, store them on-site, deliver them, and we've built many of those garden beds. We, floating islands, floating wetland islands, we've had them at Princess Anne High School, Larksboro Middle School. We still pull those things in and let them put plants on them and put them back out in the middle of the lakes again. Trees for Clean Waters is a grant program we've done with Virginia Department of Forestry several times where it's given us enough funding to go into classrooms and actually teach different class levels about the importance of trees, urban tree canopy, the ecosystem services provided by trees, and really get the students enthused about helping to support our environmental efforts in the city. And then Arbor Day, we've done this for more than forty years. It's a community celebration. This past spring, it was done at Brookwood Elementary School. We worked with five elementary schools to become Tree Campus K-12s, which is through the National Arbor Day Foundation. And we also worked with Corporate Landing Elementary School to build an outdoor classroom so they could celebrate their Arbor Day at a new outdoor classroom by the lake. And then last but not least, emergency response and, you know, not going to wood. We haven't had to deal with this much in the last few years. But we, when there's snow on the ground and we need to get the schools open, our teams are out shoveling the sidewalks and plowing the bust loops and throwing down sand and salt and ice melt and trying to get those schools ready to open. I've seen as much as five feet of snow piled up on the front doors of Corporate Landing Middle School. So sometimes it can be a pretty daunting task. And we've worked for more than a week during one event to get the schools finally open on that following Monday. And then in the lower right-hand picture is just something that we don't, we haven't seen very often, but we've seen it in the last few years, and that is tornadoes. This is when a tornado blew through at Lanstown High School. I believe that was on a Friday. We were there the next morning. I was actually, my team was out there the next morning, and we worked to clean this up. So we do provide support when it's necessary for inclement weather or any other type of disaster. And with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Jack on the closing comments.
All right, so if the directors could just kind of be ready to answer any questions to, to kind of wrap up. We're incredibly proud of our team and the work that our team does. And I know this is to kind of steal a phrase, we like to consider ourselves quiet professionals. These are all the things that should go on in the background that make the environment suitable for learning that are not, remove the distractions. But one of the nicer pieces, and I saw some responses to this, is there's direct interaction to the curriculum in, in some cases. And it's an incredible thing that our, that our teams do to continue to support. So with all that, open it up for questions and any discussion you'd like to have.
Ms. Anderson?
So my question probably would be for Mr. DiMartini to elaborate more on why we would not purchase clear bookbags so that we don't have to use such elaborate security systems when students come in.
So I noticed, I know you said Mr. DiMartini, but I'll take this one.
Okay.
So when we talk about security items, when you start talking about the details of security functions and processes, you give away the vulnerabilities in the system. We are more than happy to have that conversation in an appropriate setting, but we're not going to share that in a public.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to know that sometime.
Mr. Callen?
Mr. Callen?
I'm sorry. In reference to the armed school security officer, did I hear you correctly that we have one at every secondary school?
We are almost, almost full. So we do not have one at every secondary school currently.
How many are we missing? Is it just one?
Two.
Two, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brown? Okay, so more along the lines of Mr. Callen's question, so probably also Mr. DiMartini question. I've had several people in District Ten reach out to me in the last couple of weeks asking about SROs and elementary schools. Do we have any armed security in elementary schools, or is that also a closed session?
We do not.
Zero.
So when we implemented the armed security program, it was in response to the fact that Virginia Beach Police Department was shorthanded when it came in the springtime, and there were a couple of years that they had to remove SROs from secondary schools. And as you know, SROs are assigned to secondary schools. They also have elementary schools that they support, but they're not direct on-site. So when we implemented the armed security, it was to address that area, the secondary schools. So we have not gone down a road where we are implementing armed security at elementary schools at this point in time. Same thing applies to SROs.
Has there been any conversation about the armed security program moving towards the elementary school level as well?
Conversation. What I'll say is, I think this is the first time that it's coming up at a school board level.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think, you know, based on the concerns I'm hearing from the community, I, I do believe that perhaps we needs to have those conversations in more detail. All right, thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Well, I just wanted to give a huge round of applause to you and your team and all the directors and all the employees that you're, that you have. I really want to give a special thank you to the Office of Maintenance Services for completing that new classroom before school started under budget. That is huge, and I'm just so grateful for the incredible work that it took to make that happen. I, I don't want to just highlight them because I, all of you, all of you that are standing here are just doing amazing stuff. And Ms. Rachel, Chef Rachel, I did want to just ask, so when you say eligibility, student eligibility, those are based on applications for free and reduced lunch, correct? Because.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, because that's, that would be the only way that you'd know. I would, I would like to just put PSA, Public Service Announcement, out there because I know that when I was a single mom, I did not apply and I certainly could have for the free and reduced lunch. And so one of the things that I, I want to really emphasize that I thought was great for you to add to this was that you get low-cost internet, dental, daycare, APIB tests, and college application fee waivers. And so I'm going to just put a PSA out there that if you are eligible, it's not just about the free and reduced lunch. It's also some assistance with some of this other stuff. So I thought that was very important for you to put that in there, and I appreciate you adding that. So, thank you. A great job to all of you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Rigs?
First of all, in reading this before tonight, I was like, oh, my gosh, it's going to take forever because the things you guys do, as you said, you are the silent teams. I appreciate everything you do. You can look, go into any school, anytime, and see how clean it is. And I know how hard you guys work. I've been there. I've lived it. I've lived there when they've cleaned it, you know, been there as late as they have, many of them. So thank you for that. And our services for the school buses, just getting right on it immediately. I know that it's a hard time of the year because just getting everything together, but thank you to you guys. Our food services, Rachel, thank you for all that you're doing. So happy for you. Just every one of you, everything you do is just amazing. And just looking at this and hearing just this little bit, I'm like, I'm so glad you're able to be able to give this report and share this with you. I have one question, and this is for Tommy's team. I know one of the things that you guys, that we keep hearing is, why don't we have metal detectors? And I saw that you had the, this, the wall ones that you got. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on that again? Because we, we still have people saying we need them, we need them, especially after these last, you know, shootings like in Georgia and everything. Can you just give us a little bit that you're able to share with us?
So there was a, I'm going to talk about process. So we have the Virginia Beach School Safety Task Force. That's chaired by the Chief of Police, me, and the Emergency Manager. The membership are many of our city counterparts. That includes fire, it includes the Sheriff's Office, and it includes members of this team. And the process that we went through is there's a subcommittee. So Tommy mentioned the Physical Security Subcommittee, and they were tasked with researching in detail the capabilities, limitations, costs, everything associated with what would be the consequence of implementing on a regular basis weapons detection. And we looked at the most basic things that detect metal up to the things that have AI that are incorporated with it. So the Evolve System, we talked about in the past. And the recommendation, and it was not a, a close decision, recommendation was not to proceed with that as a regular layer of mitigation. To go into any more detail, we will not do in a public setting because it could reveal the vulnerabilities associated with that system.
And that, and that's why I said whatever you could say for that, so. Can you say a little bit more about the wall metal detectors that, what is it that you guys?
You're talking about the handheld ones?
The handheld, yeah.
Sure. We were able to acquire money through grant funding. We saw a need to purchase handheld wanding metal detectors. So there's metal detectors, not that you walk through, that you hold in your hand and that you scan over a body at a distance, and then it would detect if you had metal on your body. Detect anything from a weapon to a belt buckle, things like that. We thought it was a good opportunity to purchase them for each of our schools for our administrator's security team in a case, in a case where they need to search a student for a weapon. It would be less intrusive. You wouldn't have to put your hands into pockets. You wouldn't have to touch students. You could simply put the metal detector in the areas in which they could carry a weapon. And if it goes, goes off, then yes, you then have to explore more into a pocket or, you know, pocketbook, something like that. But it's a good opportunity for us, I think, to, to have a less intrusive search when a student's accused of having a weapon.
So you obviously have been, have had to use them more often with what's going on with all of these threats that we've been having?
We just ordered them. They just came into our office. So we are, we are in the, in the process right now of inventorying them and then shipping them out to our, to our administrators at the school level. Each school administrator will identify folks that can use it, and then we, as a team, will, will go with the instruction with that.
And do you have some of those at the high school level for the games and things like that?
Yeah, we, we currently have, we use them at, at, you know, various different, you know, events, including graduation.
That's good to know. Thank you. And I wanted the public to know that. Thank you.
So in January of 2014, I was given something that looked like this from Kami Lanetti, and it was a list of the unfunded mandates for the city of Virginia Beach. And every year, I'm given a new one, and I've carried it with me. I carry it with me everywhere I go. But this is probably the second most important packet of information I've ever received, and I will keep this with me. And if it, if it changes, we should have this again, and we should all carry this because people have questions about these things all the time. And I had no idea half this stuff, like Landscape Services, or the number, the number of students that have registered for buses and why we have backups sometimes and let me, you know, it's easy then to flip to this and say to a parent, well, let me explain to you this. So this, this is really, really a gem. And so I appreciate everything, everything that you did this evening to, to educate us on everything that happens every single day in our school division. So thank you. Thank you very much. Raise? Okay, thank you. And so now we have an update from the Building Utilization Committee with Ronald Burke, Ronald Burke-Bial, the demographer and GIS manager. Welcome, Mr. Burke-Bial.
All right, thank you. Also, I'm going to set this up, and Mr. Burke-Bial is going to bring some, some aides to be able to help with the explanation. So while he does, I'll just kind of set up where we are. So we came to the school board last year and acknowledged that we have been monitoring Point of View Elementary School for a period of time related to overcapacity challenges that we've had there. And we signaled to the board last year, we need to plan for this year to be an adjustment. So we met with the Building Utilization Committee earlier than we typically do because there's a process that is involved in order to be able to do this, which includes community engagement. So we need to have the time to be able to go through that. So Mr. Burke-Bial is going to share the recommendation that came out of the BUC. And I encourage you to, what you should get out of this by the time we're done with the brief is all of the challenges that were resolved by the moves that were being recommended as part of this. So there's going to be the capacity challenge at Point of View that's going to be resolved. There's going to be a capacity challenge at another school that assisted, that that is going to be resolved. There's going to be what I'll call an adjacency challenge that we were able to solve. And there's a, what do we call the bowtie effect that's going to be part of this. Those are the big picture that you want to see related to what does this do? And then how many students does this impact? Which are all big elements related to, or we make it a good change for, based on the recommendation. So those are the big picture items that we'd like you to get. You ready to go?
All right. Welcome.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, school board members, Dr. Robertson, thank you for letting us share this information that we have for you. I'm going to give you kind of a little bit of a warning beforehand. This is statistically very dynamic and is, could be very difficult to understand. But I am ready to answer any questions during the presentation or after the presentation is over with. This actually took nine months for Connor Syak and I to put together so that we could have enough scenarios that our BUC team, they really handled the challenge. And they've, they've come up with a recommendation. So that's what we're going to share today, is what the recommendation is. In 2023, the Building Utilization Committee met and tasked the BUC with analyzing potential rezoning of Point of View Elementary School. On September thirteenth of this year, the BUC convened and recommended a rezoning for Point of View. The, this presentation is designed basically to share that recommendation and the communication plan associated with it. So we always try to build our, our scenarios upon the policy 514. And basically, just to boil it down to a couple of simple matters, the, we're, we have put together the factors that are associated with the rezoning as well as pointing out that the, the BUC's primary responsibility is effective long-term, long-range planning. In addition, we plan for redistricting. And so this is where we're at. We've come up with a recommendation, and it's based upon these factors. Optimal utilization of space, ensuring that enough space is available for each and every student, keeping neighborhoods together, developing long-term solutions that will solve problems, construction considerations. If, if new developments are coming in, what do we, what should we do about that? What are the implications associated with that? Reducing the number of divided feeders zones. We did that. We worked with the middle school on that. Transportation considerations. Are we tasking our transportation department with too much, too, too much mileage? Are we leaving a? Uh, too, too much mileage? Are we leaving a smaller, uh, smaller footprint? Uh, how are we helping the environment out? Uh, the impact of the enrollment changes on course offerings. Can a school offer pre-K? Can a school offer ECSC if they're at the upper bound of the in-range uh, capacity? And then the desire is to re- redirect as many, as few schools as possible. And try to minimize uh, the number of students as possible. This was a huge challenge. Th- this area that we're talking about is highly dense with elementary and middle school students. And we went out there, we visited this area, we saw it, and it's, it's, uh, it really does need help. We've been to the school as well. So, for nearly five years, Demographics and Planning has monitored, analyzed, and reported. Point of View's capacity to the BUC and the school board. This began in November twenty nineteen, and led to the thirteenth September twenty twenty-four meeting of the BUC. Where they made a recommendation. Since twenty nineteen, three new multifamily apartment complexes have been. Have really evolved in this area that are assigned to Point of View. And you'll see why that's so important to understand that. Um, and then now we're at the point where we've made a recommendation, and we are ready to share it with you. So this is what Point of View looks like at, at this current time. Uh, the orange area is the Point of View area, zone. And you can see there are three block, blue blocks that are within the Point of View uh, zone. One is the Hunt Club condo uh, development. It has twenty-two condos that are slated to go in there. There is no activity happening there. It hasn't been any activity for several years, so we're not counting that in at this point. Besides, it only generates two students, two elementary school students. There is the apartments on uh, Greenwich, which are Artistry on Greenwich, which is the next blue block, next to the Hunt Club. By the way, the, all the maps are oriented, top is north, bottom south, left is uh, west, and east is right. So if you look just le- uh, just east of tho- those apartments, the Hunt Club condos. Um, you'll find that there is this artistry at Greenwich going on, and I'm gonna show you some pictures of what that looks like at this point in time. And then a little bit further east, the next big blue box is the uh, one-twenty-two Mac Street Development. And so the question becomes, what do you do with all these uh, developments when uh, you're at overcapacity? Currently, or very near to overcapacity. I'd just like to orient you about, you know, this was made really easy. In some ways, but really difficult in other ways. Um, if you look to the north, there's Pembroke Elementary School. The capacity for Ca- uh, Pembroke Elementary School is negative seven point eight percent. That is within range, within that ten to negative ten percent range. So it's good. But the key here is that it could hold more uh, students if needed. So they have, they're uh, floating around undercapacity, but uh, still within range. Uh, Point of View is at nine point five percent. We haven't got the September thirtieth numbers, obviously, yet, so we'll get, we'll get the update on that soon. You look at Arrowhead to the, to the west, Arrowhead's capacity is at negative six percent. Again, room to put some students. Look at Kempsville, they're at negative nine point eight percent. Um, there's room for students there. And then you also have Kempsville Meadows, Windsor Woods, Thalia. And uh, possibly Fairfield. So with that in mind. That's where we began, knowing what the current situation was. So the current situation at one-twenty-two Mac Street, if you remember, this used to be the old recycling plant. The recycling plant had probably a, a mountain of concrete that was, I don't know, fifty to a hundred feet tall in that area. They've completely cleared that out. And so any, at any moment, they'll, they should start developing that particular lot. Um, they haven't done any gr- uh, site work at this point, other than clearing the recycling out. But if you look down below that A- Artistry on Greenwich, uh, Greenwich, they are currently moving very quickly. Very, very quickly. They've got roads cut, they've got curbs in, they have infrastructure going in. And there, every time we go out and visit it, which we visited two weeks ago, there's always movement on that, on that lot. So they're going, they're gonna go, go up pretty quickly. Now, what will one-twenty-two Mac Street do? It'll add forty-nine additional elementary schoo- school students to the Point of View if we don't rezone them. How about Art- Artistry on Greenwich? They'll add thirty-five additional elementary school students. So you got a total of, um, let's see, eighty-four students that could possibly end up at uh, uh, Point of View Elementary School. This is a concern for us, knowing that their capacity is at nine point five percent. So what does it look like for the future for Point of View? Now, I, if you need me to describe how this, these graphs are set up, I would be more than happy to do that, if you wanna tell me at this point. But basically, I'll go over it. The, you have five stacks per graph. Each stack represents a school year. The blue area for each stack represents what is in-range capacity-wise. And then the orange stack on top of that is how much they're out of range. So you can see on the left side, the forecasted capacity. This is with no developments whatsoever. You can see that over the course of time, that the uh, capacity continues to increase without the new developments. We expect that it'll hit about nineteen point five percent, which is, as you can see in the orange block, nine point five percent above. The uh, end-range capacity. This is a big concern for us. And then on the right side, you can see the new development capacity that's associated with Point of View. This is the natural growth, which is your left graph, plus the new developments, and you can see what happens. It just balloons to thirty-two point three percent by year twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine. In addition to Point of View, we recognized, thanks to Ms. Ingram. We recognized that the Kempsville Elementary School is going to be, uh, gonna run into some opposite issues. Undercapacity. And graph is built the same as the Point of View. If you look at twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we're expecting them to be at forty point three percent below capacity. That is a big concern. So why not take and try to blend the overcapacity that you have at Point of View? With the undercapacity at Kempsville High School, and it kind of makes sense to try to figure out a way to do that. Okay, so this is where it gets a little challenging to try to describe. So we've got a map. I don't know if you can see this or not. So I can point to things versus trying to describe it to you. So the hatched areas are the areas that will be rezoned. If you look at the colors, you have pink for Arrowhead, you have orange for Point of View, you have purple for Kempsville. And you have blue for Pembroke. The recommended rezoning plan is to move uh, children around within these zones. So the hatched areas actually represent Point of View, former Point of View, um, students. So the former Point of View students in this particular area right here are fourteen. There's not a lot of students in that area. But what it does, it enables us and leverages us the ability to move Artistry on Greenwich Apartments. Into the Arrowhead Zone, which makes sense. They can handle it. They're at, uh, I think they were at about six percent. Undercapacity. So that took care of a little issue that was associated with that area. But we also noticed that one unique thing. This line right here, this orange area, this hatch. If you look at where the line runs, that is Parliament Drive. That means that those students that are on the south side of Parliament Drive are going to Arrowhead. So why not re- realign that while you got the opportunity here, so that you can put those forty students back in Point of View? And that was, that was uh, something that Connor Syak found and discovered as we were going through this. The other area is this like peninsula area right here that is associated with Kempsville. That's thirty-seven students. Same kind of issue. Why not take these thirty-seven students and put them into the Point of View area? And create a normality associated with the zone. You can see that the zone is, it's got kind of a normal uh, shape to it. As well as Arrowhead. Arrowhead now ha- they don't have that long neck that what used to be right there. And then in order to take the remainder of the students that are necessary to bring Point of View into capacity. We would move one hundred and ninety-seven students in Area D into Kempsville. This is former Point of View. This is that dense, really dense area down in here. So that's kind of the, the strategy that we used. And we, we built, built about nine models. Some worked, some didn't work. Um, and we, we introduced three of them to the BUC. They saw the reasoning behind the uh, doing, moving forward with this particular recommendation. So what happens when you do all, make all these adjustments? Well, you can see on the left graph, Point of View is within range, and by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, they're at actually optimal, optimal capacity. At zero. That's, ideally, that's where you want all of them to be. Uh, it's hard to achieve that, but we were able to achieve that with Point of View. Kempsville, they're also in, uh, in range now. They're no longer undercapacity. And um, they, over the long term, would stay in range as well. So, there are some features and benefits associated with doing this rezoning. One of them is, is that each has a, a corresponding uh, policy five-fourteen uh, factor. That we tried to incorporate in, in this particular rezoning. Point of View is within capacity, which touches on optimal utilization of space and develops a long-term solution. We feel that that's, that's achievable. Kempsville is the same. So we've, we've actually accomplished two with one move through rezoning. We're, we're trying to be very efficient there. Point of View neighborhoods are realigned. That tackles the, um, keeps neighborhoods together. Uh, spatially removes Arrowhead and Point of View abnormalities. We, we've given them back uh, uh. Some substance in this area, and substance in this area for each of those particular zones. Transportation efficiencies are absorbed, which is one of the factors. Uh, in fact, we actually cut it back just a little bit, not a lot, a little bit. Uh, so we actually were able to save on our carbon footprint there. Um, new development membership uh, was accommodated, um, so we were able to take. This particular development, put it into Arrowhead. This particular development, we're putting into Pembroke. That's the only thing that's happening at Pembroke, is just that development. Um, no, no existing students are associated with that. The uh, multi, uh, the, the, sorry, the middle school was realigned to align up with the elementary school. And there's a slide coming about that to show you what, what will happen uh, with that, and that's uh, uh. It realigns the number of feeder patterns, which was a factor. Eliminates uh, Point of View portable needs. We've got like four, five portables there, so we should be able to remove those, and if we need them elsewhere, we can put them elsewhere. But it'll put all the students in the facility itself. The uh, Point of View non-core programmatic spaces is uh, made available with the rezoning, which means that. Right now, they don't have any pre-K VPI. They don't have ECSC, because they just simply do not have room. They're stacking up uh, disability equipment in the hallways, and it's really hard to get through there. Uh, but, you know, this would relieve that sense of not being able to take care of. Uh, those particular uh, students. And uh, you know, if that's the direction the school board wants to go to. Uh, in putting the students that live within the zone, uh, that are pre-K VPI or ECSC. This is a kind of a step towards that, if you decide to do that. And then, um, so that, it impacts the course offerings. So this is, this is just a map of what it was on the left. And what it, it could be if we were to move forward with the zoning on the right. And you see, it's so mu- it's so much better uh, with the rezoning. There's a table at the bottom. I need to explain this. It's kind of confusing, because we've got a lot of numbers there. Uh, but I do wanna show, share with you that, uh, thanks to Mr. Callen, he kind of pointed some issues out with it. So we've updated it, and you'll see those in red, but, um, which kind of reminds me to share what those numbers represent. So you've already seen the uh, the capacity numbers. So the last four columns are the capacity numbers over the school years, starting from. Uh, school year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, which is the year that we're proposing to move forward with the rezoning, if you agree. Uh, what we didn't share was what would happen to Pembroke. And so you have Pembroke's uh, capacity, you see. And then you also, uh, you also have Arrowhead's capacity. You can see what happens with it as well. So down at the bottom, on the left-hand side, we have what is called existing student impact. This is the number of, the total number of students that will be moving from one zone to another. So it will have an effect upon two hundred and eighty-eight students. The confusing column is the not, net existing student change. Basically, we're saying, okay, at Arrowhead, they're gonna lose twenty-six students with all these moves. At Pembroke, they lose none, because there's no, there's no students mov- existing students moving. Kempsville, they're gonna gain a hundred and sixty students. Uh, Point of View, they're gonna lose a hundred and thirty-four students. So that's how you read that column. So we talked a little bit about the middle school. The middle school is Larkspur. There are a couple of issues here. First off, Larkspur is the largest middle school with membership attendance. And so what this does is it helps to alleviate some of that attendance, membership uh, pressure that's on that particular school. So if you look at Area AA. This area right here, there's gonna be eighteen students, the existing students that will move from, from Larkspur. To Independence. In addition to that, we have, on the left-hand side of the, the PowerPoint, we have nineteen students from one-twenty-two Mac Street. That will go to Independence, for a total of thirty-seven students that'll be going to Independence. Capacity remains in range, and then we have Kempsville Middle School gains a hundred and twenty-three middle school students. That's this area with the red border, in Area BB, double B, and then capacity remains in range for them as well. High schools were considered, but not recommended. So just to kind of sum up where we're at here, um. We have a plan that. Really tackles the Point of View issue, and it's a proactive plan. It's not a reactive one, where we're having to scramble to try to figure out what to do. And my hat's off to the BUC for recognizing the proactivity associated with that. We have a plan that tries to help the middle school issue, the Larkspur Middle School issue. So, uh, that's all I have. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay.
Oh, I can see here. Okay, Ms. Brown.
Okay, so you mentioned that this is proposed to occur in twenty-five, twenty-six, and. Um, you know, I recognize that, that's just next year. And so we have, um, students that are already in those schools. Uh, what is our process? Since I've never been through this before, um, for collecting public input? And, um, what does this look like, um, moving forward?
Yeah, that's a real good question, and Ms. Ingram's gonna tackle that right after I'm done here. Any other questions?
Uh, Ms. Ricks.
Uh, exactly how many, um, are going to be, I could add it, but I just wanted to hear it from you. Are gonna be taken from Larkspur?
It's like a hundred and six.
A hundred and.
Yeah, the total, total is one-twenty-three from uh, the southern part of Larkspur.
Right.
And eighteen from the northern part of existing students. And then there's an additional nineteen from the one-twenty-two Mac Street, once it gets developed.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Yen.
You're welcome.
I just wanna thank you and your team. Um, I think you've done a fantastic job, and you all worked really hard and came up. With a great scenario for this and helped this situation tremendously, so I, I just wanted to say hats off, and thank you very much.
Um, you, you mentioned that you'll streamline, especially Parliament Drive.
Yes.
The southern, the southern part of Parliament Drive. Does that put those students in the walk, in a walking zone, or is that still a bus zone?
I would assume, uh, unless there are rules against crossing Parliament, then I would assume they're in the walking zone.
Yeah, so it's, that's a great point. It obviously would impact the, uh, we call it a non-transportation zone, so we would do the analysis.
Okay.
To draw the appropriate lines for what would be a non-transportation zone, what would be a transportation. non-transportation zone and what would be a transportation zone.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Ingram.
And I'll just continue with the brief, and I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Burkabal and, uh, Mr. Sayock, another great, uh, important part of our Facility Services team, who does a lot of long-range planning for the future, um, as we get ready for schools, so. Thank you. So, um, you know, uh, working with our communications team, um, after tonight's brief to you, uh, the proposed rezoning plan will be available to the public tomorrow on September twenty-fifth through a dedicated website on our office's school locator site on vbschools.com. Included on the website will be a fact sheet, uh, including maps of the proposed rezoning plan and listing neighborhoods, street names, and street number ranges, uh, when needed, um, for the affected areas that you see in the hatched area here for the, the public's information. Um, FAQs will also be available on the website, as well as a survey for the public, um, which we worked with, um, Dr. Banicki's office, uh, Dr. Janicki on, um, and this survey will be live from September twenty-fifth through October ninth. Uh, communication will also be sent to all families and staff within the affected areas through Parent Square, um, from the schools, and a direct mailing to all affected residential areas will also be sent out via US Mail tomorrow, um, to ensure any families with non-school-aged children are also informed of the proposed change and of the upcoming public meetings. Um, communications will also have press releases to inform local media and share this information on, uh, social media as well. So, um, a look at the upcoming timeline for the review and public input for this rezoning plan is in front of you. Uh, we're here today, um, for School Board Workshop. Um, our next step again, as I mentioned, is tomorrow, we will have the website survey and communications live, uh, with that survey live through October ninth. And next week, uh, Monday, September thirtieth, we will have our first public community meeting, uh, at Larkspur Middle School Auditorium from six-thirty to seven-thirty. And then on Tuesday, um, October first, the next day after that, from five to six PM at Point of View Elementary School Cafeteria. Um, those will serve both the middle school areas being rezoned and the elementary school, um, affected areas being rezoned. Uh, we then have a targeted date. Um, I believe we're meeting October twenty-third, uh, Mr. Culpepper. Uh, between October seventeenth and twenty-fourth was our range to try to meet with, uh, Building Utilization Committee so that we can get in front of the board again on, uh, November twelfth for school board information on what the, the community input was for the plan and a public hearing. And then, um, our goal is also to come back to you, um, for, on December tenth for school board action for the proposed rezoning plan. Again, this plan would take effect for school year twenty-five, twenty-six in August twenty-twenty-five. And with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions. Uh, you should have in your packet a copy. The survey will be electronic, but there is a copy of the survey and the related questions that will be sent out to the public and available online, um, via QR code, um, as well, um, tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Callen.
I don't have a question, but I would like to echo Mrs. Anderson's compliments. Uh, let's just say that in life, there are certain personalities where the lights come on slowly.
Are you emphasizing yourself again?
We won't mention any names, but I want to say thank you to Jack and his team for helping the lights to come on brighter. I appreciate all your efforts.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. So, uh, the work done here was, is just impressive, and I appreciate everything that went into the, to, to presenting this tonight. I do have a question, though. So we have the workshop tonight. Tomorrow, website survey and communications will be going out. Um, it seems pretty quick for these public community meetings, especially with scheduling for, you know, families. Um, were they already notified about these upcoming meetings, or?
Um, no, they'll be notified tomorrow via Parent Square, so they'll have this whole week to go through. Uh, we were looking at maybe possibly later in the week, but there are holidays later in that week as well. So we just wanted to make sure that they have the chance to, you know, we'll be there as staff, um, with boards to be able to, to talk to them about, um, the rezoning plan. They also can contact our office, uh, via phone, um, online, um, via our, um, email address as well.
And will these community ma- meetings be, um, like a Zoom call where they're able to watch the meeting afterwards, just in case they can't attend?
Uh, we do not have that planned at this time, no ma'am.
Okay.
But we do have the information online, and again, we have, we're ready to answer any questions that might come up.
Okay, and, uh, these surveys, um, they're, they're going out to, to the parents and families as well?
Yeah, so the, the surveys will be available via survey link on the website and then via QR code at the community meetings. Um, they will be filled out electronically, um, just to help us process the data and, and all that. But we did want to show the board today, um, a snapshot of the questions that are going to be made available to the public, as well as, you know, open public comments that we had available at the end of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Riggs?
I, I forgot to mention, I, this is something I have been questioning for a while, especially with Larkspur overcrowded, so I want to thank you. You guys are experts with this, and you've done such a good job. You could be a teacher. The way you explained it, really, actually, I mean, this is not easy to understand, but the way you were up here describing it, you could definitely be a teacher because you were going through each one. I was like, he sounds like he's a teacher. Uh, maybe you have that in your past, but, um, thank you for all that you're doing, and it just makes sense. I mean, you can see the big chunks taken out that really need to be back. And I know these neighborhoods because I grew up in this area, so seeing this and, and seeing it on the maps, you realize, wow, we can get this back into sync, and it works. So it, and it works for Kempsville Middle School as well as Larkspur very well. So thank you so much. I appreciate this.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Um, I was just taking a closer look here, and I was curious, that, um, map that was over here, um, is there a, a way that I can see which streets are affected? Because, um, a very big portion of Larkspur Middle School sits in District Ten, and, um, I just want to see, um, if that's impacted. Not that it necessarily changes anything, but, um, it may mean that I need to do some extra outreach in my district, so, thank you.
Absolutely. So tomorrow on the website, we have a fact sheet with not only the maps where you can see the streets, but then also a listing of all the streets and the street ranges. So North Witch Duck Road, for example, um, not all of North Witch Duck Road is impacted, but a certain street range. I don't know the numbers right now, but that is all listed, um, it's shown, um, on the map, and then it's all listed on the fact sheet so that you can look at that. And we do have our existing attendance on maps, um, in PDF format online, and then also, um, you know, on a GIS online component. You can zoom in and zoom out as well, uh, for Google Maps, but, but those are all listed for, um, you tomorrow on the fact sheet. Thank you, Ms. Woodhouse. Yes, we can do that. We'll send it out tomorrow.
So, Mr. Burkabal, I would also just like to say to you, um, to Mrs. Riggs' point, um, that, that was really fantastic, but even more so, you gave a lot of credit to Connor Sayock, too, when you presented, and, and that just speak volumes about your leadership and how you are preparing, um, him, um, for growth in this division. Um, he's a former VBCPS grad. Um, I've known him since he was in kindergarten, and it's been my honor to watch him grow in his profession, and I really, I really thank you for that. Leadership matters. Thank you.
They're, they're both very valuable members of our team.
Yeah, it, it's, it's great to see, great to see. And his parents are both VBCPS employees also, so. And with that, Dr. Robertson, I turn this to you for the forecast of the regular school board meeting agenda for second quarter. Holy cow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, uh, Ms. Taniata. Okay. So what you're going to see is, uh, a sequence of several big events that, and decisions that the board is going to need to make over the next several months. So thank you. Um, the first, uh, we want to talk about the workshops on October eighth. Uh, we're going to, to take another look at the Vi- New Virginia Department of Education's School Performance and Support Framework to give you a deeper understanding of how that fr- performance and support framework will work and implications for our division. Next, uh, we're going to share with you how we're going to engage with our stakeholders over the next, over the month of October, um, around the cell phone free education. Uh, it was a governor's executive order. We now have final guidance from the Department of Education, and we're going to share with you in that presentation how we're going to engage with stakeholders. Next, we're going to introduce the, uh, first in a series of three conversations around the next two-year calendar process, which is a, a next step after our school board retreat in July. Um, then moving to information on the eighth, we have a budget resolution regarding a twenty-three, twenty-four reversion of revenue sharing formula reconc- reconciliation, which is a, a, an annual process. And we're also going to, Dr. Banicki's going to share the Compso Twenty-Thirty Strategic Framework that's been developed by the Ad Hoc Committee. So a full workshop and information item on the October eighth. Then move, there are also resolutions, uh, noted, um, and consent in action. So if anyone has any concerns about those, they can also be discussed well before we get to the meeting date. Then we go October twenty-second, and, uh, we'll have a Department of Teaching and Learning update and a recover, a recovery school update. Um, I've been updating the board, uh, with Ms. Woodhouse's assistance a couple of times a month. Uh, we've, a great deal of work has been done, so we're actually going to come in before you, Bobby Jameson, and do a presentation where we are with Recovery School Workshop. Moving to information on the twenty-second, you'll see, uh, follow-up from the school calendar discussions that we did in workshop. You'll s- uh, get an update on the Division Literacy Plan and then Policy Review Committee, as well as some interim, interim financial statements. Moving to November the twelfth, we'll provide you in workshop an update on the All-In Virginia Plan and where we are with that. Uh, we'll provide you where, where we went with the cell phone free education that we said we were doing October. What does it look like now in November? And again, that's going to be the first in a series of bringing forth how we're going to implement the governor's executive order in January. Um, moving to information, we've got a Building Utilization Committee report, uh, be, uh, performance, I'm sorry, Behavioral Mental Health Supports Year One Implementation Evaluation for PIA, some course, uh, new courses that we're excited about that we'll introduce to you in, in the area CTE. And then again, in consent agenda, you see a number of items that, uh, are continuations from previous meetings. Moving to November twenty-sixth, we have a facilities update, uh, by School Division Services. Uh, we have information item around the cell phone free education plan and a legislative update, and then again, PRC committee recommendations. And again, if you look into the consent action, it's, it's follow-ups from information items on November twelfth. And then in our final meeting of this, this quarter, quarterly forecast, December the tenth, we'll have, uh, a swearing-in ceremony for new school board members, level forecast of the next quarter, and another recovery school update, uh, and the first in a series of updates that we'll give you on Recovery School to be followed in January to seek approval of the plan. Um, in information, we have, uh, a Sustainable Schools presentation, an academic and career planning update, and the Canvas Year Two Comprehensive Evaluation, as well as college cour- coursework and readiness assessments from PIA. So we're going to have a full slate, uh, in, in the next quarter with some items that, uh, uh, are very important to our, our school community.
Do we have any closed sessions this evening?
No, unless you just want to hang out with me.
No.
All right.
Option B is what?
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, option B is an early dinner. It's five twelve, and we will reconvene at six o'clock.